And the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, February 25th. I want to welcome Selectman Benka back in real person.
Thank you.
In human person.
It is great to be back. Thank you.
We had him in our telephone box at the last meeting. He participated, but remotely. And I just have one very brief announcement. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, the Brookline Community Foundation will be holding a reception honoring its grantees. And it will be at 6:00 PM at the Brookline Senior Center. Was a quiet week in Brookline because it was school vacation week. So, I don't know if anybody has other items to mention, but please do.
No, I just want to mention, last night Chairman DeWitt and I were both at the public hearing before the Sunday Board of Appeals on the Hancock Village matter. And a very interesting evening, I thought. The neighbors came out in force to express their concerns about the project. So, I think it was a good meeting.
And I think it would be fair to acknowledge that Representative Coppinger came also to speak, and I thought was very eloquent. Okay. Any other comments or announcements from members of the board? Then we will move to our calendar and miscellaneous items. First being the minutes from February 11th.
I had some small.
I have a couple. Yeah, me too. All right.
As did I.
All right, well, let's pass them in. And therefore, I will move that we approve the minutes from February 11th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is a donation for Fire Station number five. Ah, okay. Maybe we'll.
The chief was downstairs for an advisory meeting.
We could hold that one and see if the chief can join us later. If not, well, we'll give him time, anyway. Next is a grant, Shannon Grant for the Police Department. Chief O'Leary.
Good evening. This is a grant that we have been able to receive based on our partnership with Boston Police Department for about the last six years. This year, the amount is at $13,000. It'll be used to offset some of our costs when we do joint investigations with Boston Police, or we do warrant sweeps and items like that with the outside of our community.
Okay.
It is, if the board votes to accept it, it is in this calendar year that we're currently in, and it's for $13,000, like I said.
Okay. Questions for Chief O'Leary?
No.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I mean, as always, I'm very pleased with the way your department goes after all of these grants. But I think this is particularly important, that when we're dealing with young people, that you sort of stop any potential problems at an early stage before they get a record and so forth.
Thank you.
So, good job.
Yeah, and I would say, we probably are all in agreement that our early intervention is far better than later. So, any other questions or comments? Then I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $13,000 from the Senator Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant Program on behalf of the Police Department to be used in following up on juvenile and young adult crime. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I was going to, the chief has an item on the main calendar. Do we want to take it while he's here?
He's withdrawing briefly, or you want to come back? Okay, we can certainly move it.
I think he may take you up on that.
Okay, all right. Then we'll move to the main calendar, and it's item number eight and item number nine. So.
I'm not quite sure which one's first.
I think what we have first is the promotional exam.
Yes. Since the early 1990s, the Selectmen have put us on a schedule to have our promotional exams for Captain, Lieutenant, and Sergeant every two years. We've been on that cycle, and in order to remain on that cycle, the next exam that we would be interested in taking is the one that will be held in October of this year. So, what I'm asking, if the board will authorize us to solicit the State's Human Resource Division to include us in the three rounds of promotional exams that will be held sometime in October of 2014.
I would say absolutely. Any questions or comments?
Sounds good.
Nope. Go for it. Do you need a vote from us to authorize you?
I don't think so. I think as long as you know about it, and we're okay to go, we'll.
I think maybe we should take a vote.
We'll do it officially, because then it will become official. How's that?
Okay.
All right, so I, pardon?
That's okay.
Okay. I move that we authorize the Police Department to participate in the upcoming October 2014 State Civil Service Promotional Exam Process for Captain, Lieutenant, and Sergeant. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Now you have dispatchers.
Yes, if, as you remember, a couple of months ago, I came before the board to fill a couple of slots in our dispatch ranks. We currently are slated for 16 full-time emergency dispatches in the Public Safety Dispatch Center. When I was here a couple of months ago, I explained to you that we're going to be faced with a lot of changes in the center over the coming months. And the changes are good. The changes are the people that we've been hiring and training and seeing how they do, and they're going for jobs in both public safety departments in town. So, in the beginning of January, we hired two additional dispatches. One of them was to replace a retirement that took place on January 21st, and we've just learned from, that the Fire Department will be hiring a second dispatcher effective April 22nd of this year. So, those two positions that we hired for, thinking that we would be able to use them down the line, we've had to use already. They're in the academy, they'll be graduating, I think, next week, and then they'll be put to work.
Okay, so as I understand it, you keep hiring dispatchers and promoting them, and therefore, you want more dispatchers?
Yes. But what I'd like to do.
I want spares.
What I'd like to do this time is, we're having, we're going to have probably an additional three vacancies, based on our background investigation, where they fell on the list for current dispatches when we hire as a police department in June. I don't want to go into the summer with three dispatches down and then deal with summer vacations. It's just not going to be right. So, with that in mind, in order to plan ahead, we have several good candidates on the dispatcher list that we've established and we hired from a little bit before. And we have two slots available in the April 7th Academy for dispatches. So, I want to get permission to go ahead and go two above our normal staffing levels in order to get those dispatches hired and put into the academy on April 7th. Now, in order to pay for them, the five-and-a-half-week academy will be paid, their salaries will be paid out of the state grant for training that we have. We have enough money left in it, and we put money aside to account for those two positions. That will cover them till sometime around mid-May. From mid-May till the beginning of June is when our budget will have to cover the two positions paid salaries. We have eight slots reserved for the lower police academy, of which two, probably three of our current dispatches will be going to as members of the Brookline Police Department. So, in the beginning of June, they will fill two of the vacant positions, and then we'll probably be back to hire again at that point. So, it's a convoluted way to say we're planning ahead. We want to get them trained up, we want to get them in, and when they get hired as police officers, when other people get hired as police officers, they can fit right in. And they'll hit the ground running in the summer.
Okay. Questions for the chief?
No. I commend you for thinking ahead rather than having to deal with a crisis when it arises.
Thank you.
And I think it also says something about the current dispatchers, that you really do see them moving into the ranks as police officers.
Yes. You know, they've done good, they've done all we've asked them to do in the two or three years that they've been working for us, and it's a good way to go. And they scored very high on the state test as well. Good.
Great. All right, then.
Makes sense to me.
Excuse me. Therefore, wait a minute, let me find my piece of paper. I move that we authorize hiring of two E-911 dispatchers to fill anticipated vacancies. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, now we're going to move back to the miscellaneous calendar, and the next item is purchasing. DPW, are we?
Dave Kinnakakis.
Aha, Mr. Kinnakakis, and possibly Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon.
Possibly, yes.
Along.
Thank you.
With.
I think it's just David.
We've, I'm requesting tonight the approval and execution of the three-year lease purchase financing contract. We do this almost every year, predominantly with the DPW. This year, we have the Water and Sewer Division, we have the Highway and Sanitation Division, and at the same time, the School Department was leasing a, was planning to lease a bus, so enrolling all these three pieces of equipment together, we had a substantial lease financing here. So, we're looking for the equipment with a value of $602,048.74. The lease would be with JP Morgan Chase. Annual payment is $202,876.36. Also, a small one-time escrow payment, because all three of these units are not going to be ready for delivery for a couple of months, so when we sign the lease now, as they come on, we then, the bank authorizes the payment out of an escrow fund, in each case, to the vendors that are currently building these, this equipment. And the equipment is an international model, heavy-duty truck and combo jetting vacuum body for the Water and Sewer Division, a rubbish packer for the Highway and Sanitation Division, and the cutaway Ford minivan bus for the School Department. And if you have any questions, the DPW is here.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
It might be for Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon. Happened to look out my office window on Route 9 the other day, and I saw one of your packers on the back of a tow truck heading west. So, are we down a packer right now? Is.
Are we down a packer?
We have a spare packer at all times.
Yeah, we do keep a spare, but yeah, from time to time, they do go down.
That was just my preliminary question. My real question is, we're looking at a new solid waste disposal contract coming in July. Is there any reason why we shouldn't be investing in another packer right now?
I knew you were going to ask that question, and here's the reason why. This packer was ordered last July in this fiscal year. You're correct, we are looking at all the aspects of sanitation, including curbside collection, load haul and dispose at the transfer station. We're looking at all that. In fact, we've already received bids and are analyzing those bids. It may well be that sometime in the near future, I'm going to come to the board and I'm going to make certain recommendations relative to the sanitation operation. One of them could possibly be for privatizing curbside collection, although that's not a certainty at this point. And as, after a preliminary look at the bids, it's absolutely not a certainty at this point. Regardless of what decisions this board may make in the future going forward with sanitation, I couldn't take the risk that we would continue to do in-house collection and not have the equipment to do it. Therefore, that's why that truck was put into the budget this fiscal year, because we absolutely needed to have it. If for some reason, we do privatize, we would keep one packer anyway to do in-house collection of yard waste and other items, and that's the truck that we would keep going forward.
I see. And it may not be a matter of privatizing, I mean, it may be a matter of mechanized collection in-house, and that's another reason why I wonder whether investing in another piece of equipment right now is.
If we decided to keep it in-house with automated collection, then this new truck could be retrofitted with a rail loader for picking up either 35 or 65-gallon toters. So, that's really, that doesn't concern me too much right about now. I think it would have been a worse option not to go forward with the truck. In the event that we keep the status quo going forward, I'd really be behind the eight ball come July.
One question, just on the vacuum truck, too. Don't we have one of those already?
We have two.
Yeah.
We have a, we have two vac trucks. One is a larger unit, and the other's a smaller unit. We found that the smaller unit just hasn't been as efficient as we thought it would be. So, what we're doing here is, we're buying another large truck, and we're trading in the small units. So, what we'll have going forward, we'll have an older, large truck, which we completely refurbished about five years ago, that's in great shape, and we'll have the new one going forward also. So, we're going to still have just two units, we're not adding one to the fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Benka?
Yeah, actually, those are questions that I had, but let me just ask a more general question. Do we have a program or standards for truck replacement?
Yes.
And could you just shoot a copy of that to the board?
I could.
Thank you.
We have a very rigid vehicle replacement policy for all of our different types, classes of equipment, that we try to follow as best we can with the money that we're budgeted. So, I can definitely forward that to you.
Is that based on national standards or New England standards? Is there a body that, an independent body outside that provides guidelines for equipment longevity?
Yes, we actually had a consultant prepared as far as originally. It's got to be, it's got to be 10, 12 years ago now.
Okay.
And then we did have it updated in 2005, but it's based on lifecycle analysis for the equipment in New England.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Selectman Waschinsky?
I have the exact same question. Selectman Goldstein had a question for David. Do you know what the implied interest rate is on this lease? Because the lease is just a form of financing.
Correct. The lease rate is 1.078, so just over 1%. I mean, I think it's a combination, we had 12 banks that were bidding this time, so, which is much more than we had five years ago. We all know about five years ago what was going on. But the AAA bond rating, I've been told by the various interested financing companies, is very attractive, plus the fact that this was $600,000 was one of the reasons. So, we're paying only about $6,000 in interest over the three years of the loan.
That's very impressive. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, well, this is really for Andy, I think. And I have expressed this before, that I am generally skeptical of the privatization aspect, because this winter and the demands of snow removal, I think, very vividly demonstrated why it's good to have our great-town employees who can move over to do snow removal when they're not doing trash collection. But I am concerned about, you know, I think that it may be a good idea for us to go to a similar bin, to our recycling bin for the garbage. And so, you said this could be retrofitted for that. Is it, wouldn't it, this is already ordered, so we couldn't just order one that could do that? Now, is that.
It's a very simple addition to the truck, to put a rail loader on it for toters.
Isn't it a side, a side thing, though?
Well, the recycling trucks are side loaders, and those are one-man trucks. It wouldn't be prudent for me to have one side loader truck when I, if I was going to continue to do it in-house, I'd need four or five side loader trucks. But you can also do with rail loader units with two men on a truck. But don't misunderstand me. This is a work in progress going forward, and when, by putting these items out to bid, what we're trying to do is measure our performance against contractor performance. That's not to say that my recommendation is going to be back to you to privatize collection. It's more to look at best management practice to see where we fall. And I will tell you, taking a preliminary look at it, we are very competitive right now in terms of curbside collection, at least manual. So, there'll be a lot more to come on this.
Okay.
And as I think you indicated in response to Selectman Goldstein, even if you went to a mechanized system or to a privatized system, you could use this truck for the yard waste.
Yes, correct.
So, and that, you know, there's, given how, I guess, dispersed cans are for yard waste, that would, I think, never be mechanized, or be very unlikely to be mechanized.
That's correct.
Well, I'm going to ask the question that I thought Selectman Daley might be going to ask, which is, I had heard a rumor that we might have some problems with our sidewalk snowplows. Don't know if you want to talk about that or not?
Are we going to talk about that?
Well, I think we're going to be addressing snow financing and the possibility of acquisition of an emergency replacement next week.
Okay, all right.
But you've heard the rumor.
Yeah, okay. All right, so it's not that, we're not going to hear about it. Good. All right, ready, folks? Shall we move? I move that we approve and execute a three-year lease purchase financing, a three-year, executing a three-year lease purchase and financing of $602,48.74 worth of equipment with JP Morgan Chase, with an annual payment of $202,876.36, with a $1,500 escrow account for the first year only, with Deutsche Bank for the purchase of the, lease purchase of the following, one international model, heavy-duty truck and combo jetting vacuum body for use by the Water and Sewer Division, a rubbish packer with Peterbilt Model 320 chassis, et cetera, for use by Highway and Sanitation, and finally, a Ford 350 cutaway van minibus for use by the School Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, go for it.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to, I hope, agree to go fairly quickly through a series of temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. Does anybody want to hold items E, F, or G? If not, I'll read them all off, and we'll take a group vote. I move that we approve the following applications for Pine Manor College in connection with events to be held at 400 Heath Street, April 1st, April 5th, April 12th, and May 17th. And also, in addition, I move that we grant a permit to sell alcoholic beverages on town property to the Lars Anderson Autumn Museum in connection with the following dance series of events to be held at 15 Newton Street, February 28th, March 21st, and March 29th. And finally, I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Lincoln School PTO in connection with a trivia night to be held on March 1st at 19 Cannard Road. All in favor of those items E, F, and G, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman, sorry, Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
We should go back and vote to accept the $100 donation from Philip and Nicola Thompson for Fire Station 5.
Yeah, right. I still don't think we have the fire chief, but I agree. I move that we accept a donation from Philip and Nicola Thompson for the Brookline Fire Department Station, what is it?
Five.
Station five. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Any idea what the reason for their magnanimity on this was?
We'll have to ask the chief. I have no idea. Didn't hear. I'm guessing something good happened, something they wanted to recognize with appreciation. All right, back to the main calendar, and I believe we have another.
Library personnel.
Library personnel item. Yes, our librarian.
Good evening, folks. I have two items before you tonight. Permission to fill, first position is the library assistant. I don't know the order on your agenda. I apologize.
Go ahead, and you tell us in your own words.
Library assistant, three position at the Potterham Branch. I was fortunate enough to be promoting the incumbent from that position to fill a reference position at the main library, thus opening this position at the Potterham Branch. This is one of just three full-time positions at the Potterham Branch Library. The second position is a reference information librarian position at the main library. This was a bit unexpected, but Aaron Williams Hart, one of our employees, for, I'm going to guess about 10 or 12 years, has been scooped up by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners to go to work for them as their friends and trustee liaison. So, that's great news for Aaron, and we will be looking to fill that position. It would not at all surprise me, given the caliber of the applicants that we interviewed when we promoted for the prior position, that I'm not before you again fairly soon. I fully expect that at least in one of these two positions, we're going to be promoting from within house.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Flaherty?
No questions.
No? Well, I think we are all agreed that when you've got qualified in-house candidates and can acknowledge them, that just creates another spot down the road, so you can still do some recruitment and outreach. Okay, I therefore move that we authorize the filling of the following vacancies in the library department, librarian 1, K-6, and a library assistant 3, K-31. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I suppose we may see you back here in a while?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, we're going to shift to a series of licensing items. The first one is the application of Kingpin Brookline Spa for an entertainment license. Is there somebody here to speak on behalf? Please come forward.
Hi.
Hi there.
Good evening. Christine King.
Yes, and my understanding is that this is a pretty straightforward request, just because we know you, are you open yet?
No, not yet.
No? Okay. Could you just give us an update and let us know when you think you'll be operating?
Sure, we're hoping to open within the next couple of weeks, within like, the next few weeks in March, so.
Okay.
That's what we're hoping for.
Sometime in March.
But it's coming along really good.
Good to hear. This is for an entertainment license, I gather. We're talking radio.
Yes.
Yeah, program. Radio, television, et cetera. Any questions?
No, I'm just waiting for the wraps to come back.
That's right. We've been watching, wondering, when, when, when?
The menu is online now, so.
All right.
All right. Excellent. That's progress. Okay, then I move that we approve the application of, I guess we're going to say Brookline Spa, although it's Kingpin LLC doing business as Brookline Spa, Eric Batidi and Christine King, holder of a common victualler license at 75 Harvard Street for entertainment license to include radio. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Benka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing that opening.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item has been postponed, so we move to a request from Panroma LLC.
Could I make a suggestion? It strikes me that 13 and 15 might take a little bit more time. Number 14, which is just approval of a closet.
You want to do that one?
Seems pretty.
Straightforward.
Straightforward, and rather than.
I will even confess publicly that I have no clue why we're approving.
Yeah, I have to say, I wondered, too, whether you needed to get our approval.
I would just recommend we do 14 first, the fireplace application.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, for the record, we're required to have this item before us, and it is required to be a public hearing, so.
For a closet?
Mr. Solomon.
Alteration, alteration.
Alteration, alteration.
It's an alteration of premises. I'm, do not...
It is after 7 o'clock, so we are ready to go with the public hearing.
We're allowed to hold this. So, please tell us about your closet.
Thank you, Selectmen and Mr. Kleckner. I appreciate the time. There was a Massachusetts law passed allowing restaurants to obtain an off-premise liquor license for catering events. The fireplace has had for 12 years a catering license, but did it not exist an opportunity to obtain a liquor catering license to accompany that? And so we have had to, you know, buy through a liquor store and, you know, obtain license for each event. We would still obtain the license for each event, but this would allow us a little better margin in how we purchase. And the closet is necessitated so that the liquor inventory is, for offsites, is kept separate from the liquor inventory to be used in the restaurant. And so, it's taken us about maybe nine months to get through the application, which is super long. And the last bit was the building of a closet, which we've done to spec and to get the authorization. So, we are here to seek the town's approval.
Alright, any further questions for Mr. Solomon?
No ma'am.
Everyone who needed to approve this has approved it. However, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request?
To a closet.
To a closet.
To a closet. Well, a secure closet, I mean, come on, it's a special closet.
You actually shouldn't minimize it. I could, I could see a situation where you're storing liquor, and it's close to some other affected use, and that's probably why the ABCC is...
Okay.
Alright, alright, we'll be more serious, we'll be more serious.
No, this is, it is, it is compliance with the law. That is, that is correct.
Right. Okay. Seeing and hearing no persons wishing to, from the public wishing to speak, I'm ready to move this item. Are there any further questions from members of the board?
No.
Therefore, I move that we approve the application of the fireplace, James R. Solomon, owner and manager, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license as a common vitular at 1634 Beacon Street, for an alteration of said premises to include an 11-foot 9-inch by 6-foot 2 closet to be used for storing and locking alcoholic beverages for catering. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Okay. And now, we're gonna go back to item number 13, which is a request for an extension of hours by Panroma. Yeah, right. And I just would like, for the benefit of our members, people who may be watching in the public, that in the town of Brookline's bylaws, a common vitular establishment is normally permitted to operate except between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 5:30 a.m. With...
Any food?
Any food establishment. But apparently, there is some flexibility with regard to off, providing a waiver, which I gather is what this application will be requesting.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, and for the record, at this time, there is no establishment operating after 2:00 a.m. This is a unique request.
That is, that is my understanding. For the record, my name is Adam Barnoski. I'm with the Law Office of Robert Allen. I'm here representing Panroma LLC. With me is Ihan Enya, who is the owner of Panroma. He's been operating that establishment for about three years. We are here before the board by way of, I believe it's a special permit under the regulations to increase the hours from 2:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. on Thursdays through Saturday. Like I said, he's been running it for about three years. They have a pretty expansive menu, menu over there. It's pretty much anything you'd like. They do specialize in, in pizza, fresh pastas, and the like. There has been, due to its location, there is, it is somewhat of a unique circumstance because of its relationship to the, the city of Boston and its location on Comm Ave. There are a lot, there's a big need for, for late-night food over there, and there's been often instances in which customers, regular customers of Panroma will come to the door and would like something late-night, and we have provided to the board a petition which, which has over 225 signatures. Many of them are customers of Panroma, and approximately 50 are residents or, or folks who work in Brookline. And just to address, I, I would like to get out and just address the, the memo from the police department. Certainly, we don't want to move forward with this, with this petition unless it has, you know, the full support of the community, the full support of the board of selectmen, and, and the police department. I think we'd be willing to, certainly would love to accept an ability to have this permit for a short duration of time, just to see how things go. There were, I think, two instances in the past three years that were cited in that memo. There's no contesting those things, but they do seem like isolated incidences. This is not something that happens very regularly, and I think that, you know, due to its location, two instances over a three-year period isn't, isn't really all that bad. And certainly, I think Ihan would love the opportunity to really prove itself, but certainly to come back before the board to, to see whether it's working.
I guess, I don't understand what the difference between 2:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m. is, so somebody give me an explanation.
I think the biggest difference between 2:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m., from what, from our discussions, certainly he can answer anything operationally, is that because in the Commonwealth you have to, the bars close down at 2:00. So there's a large demand for, for people on their way home to, to get food. There's also a lot of students in the area who might be studying late hours and carry all kinds of bizarre hours that might not be of any understanding to you or I, but certainly they're out there. And there's just a, a high demand for it. There's a lot of places in the area, in Boston, on Comm Ave, that are open until 3:00 and 4:00, and they, they do, you know, business very well. And I would just like to throw it out there that, that my client has, has said that if, if the board would be willing, or would like him to, that he certainly would be willing to provide a police detail there, again, for either a, a short duration or a fixed duration, just to make sure this is working. Again, this is not something where, he's not interested in having a business that's running, that's causing problems for the town. He's just interested in seeing if this would work, and because it's permitted by the regs with your, with your authority, would love the opportunity to do so.
Okay, questions, members of the board?
Can we, can we talk about the, the two incidents? Because I feel just a little sketchy of details about them, but both of them are disturbances, and if I'm not mistaken, they both happened in the late hours, and that gives me concern.
Yeah, one, just to pin it down, one was act, one was 2:00 a.m., or 2:08 a.m., an intoxicated person or a couple of people, and the other was 11:00 p.m., or 10, 10:30, and that actually was the Honda used for deliveries from the restaurant, idling in the parking lot.
Tell us about the circumstances of it, how you responded, and, and, you know, how, how we can be sure that if this were granted, we wouldn't have a rash of similar incidents?
I mean, I think, you, you should let, let them know a little bit about what happened.
The one, there was a problem, really start the club, and there was a couple, case there was eaten there, when there was passing there, and they see him, the two person was there, they come inside, there was fighting there, really. There was starting the club down the street there, Paradise. I know one of them that, that's the problem start there, actually, and there was later, they go out, when they run. There was fight start the club, nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
And the one, they, they start eating there, the other people was passing, they seen the store, and he come inside. They tried to grab and take him out. It wasn't really no start fight or anything, they just walk away, they go on.
Are there any establishments on that whole strip there, Boston side, I know there aren't in Brookline, but on Boston side that are, that are open till 3:00?
Yes. They have like, probably 3 block, 3 block or 4 block around there, they have rednecks. They have, uh, there was international pizza was there, Harbor Street, and Nutless Pizza, they can come here. We are 1026, like around 1200 Comm Ave, basically like 3 block, 4 block between us. So, right now, almost they open like 3:00 a.m. They really, they, when they come from the bar, they come sit down, like have water or slice pizza, they just want to go home, you know?
I just want to be clear that, at least, my concern, and I think that of my colleagues, is oddly, the incident that occurred is sort of typical of, alright, the bars close, and people who have been drinking start coming into the street. And in effect, you become an attractive nuisance, because you will attract those folks who, now that you're open until 3:00 a.m., there could be an hour during which many people who've been drinking will arrive and become disruptive. That's our concern.
I, I think, certainly I think that that i- is a concern, and just to get to Selectman Goldstein's question about how we might address it, I think, in, in the event that we, you would require a, a, a police officer there to be off duty, a, a, on-duty police officer to be there, I think that that would, that would not only help for the late hours, but if it was for 4 hours, it would really help for many of the earlier hours, you know, it would be essentially all the way until 3:00 o'clock, and, well, they would put it about 11, 11:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. So I think that that would certainly help any situation that, that might occur, and certainly would quell any nuisance that might happen, particularly when the bars would shut down.
Can I, uh...
Go ahead.
I, I, I just, I feel, we have had a long, long history of complaints in that part of town, and some of them have been parties and apartments, but also, I've heard a number of complaints from people who live over in that, that very area about the street noise of people coming home late at night, after they've been perhaps drinking or whatever. And so, I real, I personally have a problem with getting into the 3:00 a.m. closure when we don't do it for anybody else, because I think it just encourages more noise in that particular area, and I, I think we owe it to those neighbors to do what we can not to add to the situation.
What I worry about is, we do it for one establishment, it's, we will, we will soon find that...
Set a precedent, exactly.
Others are asking for the same, the same provision.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I'm not favorable.
Actually, the argument that part of the demand here is for people coming out of the bars at 2:00, I think hurts the argument rather than it helps the argument for extending the hours. And linking that with the fact that one of the incidents was after people came out of the club Paradise across the street, I think doesn't advance your argument. You know, if we're talking about students who are up at 2:00 and studying and are looking for a pizza, that might be one thing, but to say that you're looking to satisfy the post-closing of bars in the area demand is, I think, not helpful to the argument.
I, I think, looking at it this way, you know, the Boston side of the street is not really residential street. That's all college. By moving the, the late-hour food service to the Brookline side of the street, you're moving it to the side of the street where there are residents. I mean, it just seems like we want to keep the, that late-night traffic headed to the north side of Commonwealth Ave.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, the only, the, the big reason why we brought it up was, was simply that there haven't been all that many incidences, and would love an opportunity to, to, to show you. I mean, I, I can understand, you know, why, why many members might be on the fence with it, and certainly do respect all the comments.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Yeah, for me, the argument that's compelling is the one, it's, it's in an area with a whole bunch of eating establishments, so when you open up, the others are going to see it, and then they're going to be coming before us, and then we're going to be faced with kind of raising the, the, the activity time for the whole area. It's, you know, it, and I, is that what, that, is that what we want? There are people who live right there, so.
And I, I guess I'm gonna have to add to this, and we have, we get constant complaints, and I don't want to in any way associate the complaints with your operation at Panroma. But we get constant complaints about, let's call it, activities generated along Commonwealth Avenue that filter into the residential neighborhood that abuts it. Students who live in the neighborhood who have been out eating and drinking, going home, I don't want to go into a list of some of the offensive things they do, but we really are trying to protect the residential neighborhood, and I think that's our primary responsibility here. Other comments?
No, I, and the other, the other comment is, I, I, obviously, a police detail is a minimum of four hours, and, you know, if we link this to having a police detail, not just on a trial basis, but permanently, that's quite an expense? That could be quite an expense. And I, if we're gonna go anywhere, I think I would go with having a police detail there all the time, but I'm not sure that you're really proposing that, so.
So, are, are we ready?
It's a public, public...
Well, it's public hearing.
Actually, it's not a public hearing, somewhat to my amazement, but if there's anybody here who wants to comment, we'll be happy to hear from you. Nope? Okay, then I'm going to read from section 8.75 of the bylaws, so that before we take a vote, everybody's clear about the matter of whether or not we should or could make a waiver. In cases where, in their opinion, and that's the licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, in their opinion, the public good requires it. The Board of Selectmen may issue a special permit allowing a store, restaurant, or place of business engaged in the sale of food to remain open for the transaction of such business to an hour that would be specified in the permit later than 2:00 a.m. Okay? So, we have to determine that the public good requires it.
A pretty high bar to meet.
Uh-huh. So, are we ready to take a vote?
Yeah, I'll move, no action on this request.
Okay.
Do we have to make an affirmative finding that the public good doesn't require it?
Do you want to have a motion with regard to the public good? Do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll move that I, in my opinion, the public good does not require us to grant them a waiver to be open until 3:00 o'clock.
Alright, so Selectman Daley is moving that the, there has not been sufficient evidence to demonstrate that the public good requires an extension of hours to 3:00 a.m. And if we vote to, on this finding, it would be to vote yes to agree with Selectman Daley's proposal. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky? Sorry, Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. And then I think we need a second motion, which would be to deny the application for an extension of hours from currently 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., to be extended fr, on Thursday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 a.m.
So moved.
Okay. The motion is to deny. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, next item is a public hearing on the application of IPGG Doing Business as One Stop Market for a license to sell wine and malt beverages as a packaged goods store at 321 Cypress Street.
And with the record reflect that I'm gonna recuse myself from this matter because of a business relationship with an entity who has an interest in the outcome.
Hello again. Again, for the record, Adam Barnosky with the Law Office of Robert Allen, I'm here with Suk ginger Gil, he goes by Gil, who is the owner of One Stop Market. Again, we're here for a beer and wine license there, uh, you know, one, one thing we tried to do with this, uh, we were supposed to be on last, last month, and there were, uh, there were some questions that, that were, uh, addressed to, to Gil and to my office, and we decided to get a little more community outreach, we wanted to make sure that we heard any concerns, uh, of the community. We actually held a meeting at, at his store, uh, last week, that was attended by, uh, by Selectmen Wyszynski and a few other folks, uh, that lived in the area, and there, there were a few concerns, uh, but I was happy that most of the concerns that were, were raised, uh, I think we were able to address. One was, there was a concern that this was gonna turn into a liquor store, which is just not at all the case. The biggest thing that Gil is looking to do here is to add simply beer and wine to the rear of the store, and this is really gonna just work alongside of all of the other things that are in this market. If you've gone in there, you can get almost anything, it's like a very small, uh, full grocery store, really, a very, on a small variety, so he wanted to be able to have beer and wine for customers that might already be in the neighborhood and might already go to this store. We don't anticipate that this is gonna take business away from any of the other businesses in the area, and, uh, there were also some concerns that, along with liquor, that they were gonna sell nips, that they were gonna sell single bottles of, of beer, things for immediate consumption, which is also not the case. He's looking to sell bottles of wine in cases of beer, and, uh, have, have a relatively limited selection. Uh, again, we, we do have a petition here that was signed by, uh, several people, like dozens of, of individuals in the area that are interested in having this here. Um, there was another thing that came up, uh, during the here, or during our meeting, uh, regarding deliveries, uh, there was a concern that there might be substantially more deliveries, maybe an extra, a, a daily delivery of a truck out, out there in front. Uh, we don't anticipate there would be more than one delivery, really a month, and any, any deliveries that would really come would be offset by the inventory that's currently there. We're not building out, so it's really, the beer and wine's just gonna take over inventory that's already there, so there'd be a reduction on other deliveries, certainly. Uh, there's also a question about signage, uh, certainly, I, I'm not even certain that there would be any new signage there, but in the event that there were, we would have to have public hearings on that and go through, uh, due course there to make sure that the, the signs were compliant and the signs were, uh, of, of approval by, by the planning board and, and with the support of the community. Um, I think that that's initially what it is, I'm sure there'll be many questions, and I can answer them, and Gil, we can talk about them. Uh, any questions the board may have?
Okay, well, let's open the board, or, open to questions from members of the board. Anybody want to lead off?
Can, um, can I ask, uh, the applicant or attorney Barnosky to describe exactly what you're proposing, and how it's gonna work?
Sure, yeah, I can probably get to it pretty succinctly, what, what he's looking to do is to have, if you, if you're familiar with the store, when you go in, all the way to the back, there's a row of coolers there, so that's, that would be where the refrigerator, beer and wine would be, there's also a shelf, a shelving unit right in front of that, and that's where one stand would be. The reason why that location is ideal is, number one, there's already cameras there, they're gonna install another camera and a mirror over there, and it's also a perfect location to be able to shut down, uh, that part, portion of the store on Sunday mornings, on holidays, on any time where, uh, beer and wine would not be able to be sold. Uh, they're gonna have a, a, uh, an ID scanner, uh, he'll be, uh, tip certified in class. Uh, it's, it's worth noting that he's been operating this, this location for fifteen years, there's never been a problem with an underage sale of tobacco, uh, or of Lotto or any of those sorts of things, so I don't think that this, we could think that he's gonna implement the same, uh, same techniques in selling alcohol, uh, at this location, and I, does that, does that, is that what we're looking as far as operationally goes?
And what do you perceive your product mix to be? Um, will you be selling singles, uh, single cans of beer? Um, what kinds of wines do you see yourself selling?
Uh, no, no singles, no singles at all, again, this is gonna be nothing for immediate consumption, as far as types, you wanna, what kind of types you looking at?
On customer demand, whatever the customers, you know, just kept whatever the popular one.
I guess probably popular consumption, I would, I would assume probably not, you know, high-end Burgundies and things like that sort, maybe, you know, you're looking at your, uh, you know, probably, you know, your Budweisers and your, your domestic beers and, and things of that sort, maybe some craft beers if the, uh, the demand would, would be there.
Other questions for Mr. Barnosky?
Not at this point.
No? Okay, well, um, we have the impression that there's a fair amount of public interest in this one, um, uh, and this is a public hearing, so are there any people here who wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward, and you can sort of line up along the wall there, and we'll take you in random order, uh, unless there, uh, is a, a group of pro and a group con, then we'll, we'll try to do alternate, uh, comments.
And, and we should note that we received a number of emails, all of them were in opposition.
Okay, so, before you start, let, let me just at least do this, um, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Okay, we've got one person, then you're gonna be second, okay? If you'd rather not, you can wait and let other people go first, but at least I want to be clear.
Who's first?
Well, you may go first, 'cause you're the first one there, I just wanted to be sure that the opposition has an opportunity to come forward, okay? So, um, please identify yourself for the record, um, and then you have the floor.
Very good. My name is Walterinus, I've lived on Henry Street since nineteen fifty, and I'm opposed to this because of the fact of, we have Foley's up the street, about five minutes up, and we have Kirkman's, also another liquor store, and I don't think we need another one. I spend my summer days picking cans, bottles, and papers out of my yard, because they throw them there as they walk by, and I think this is too much to ask for a liquor, liquor store because of the park. The park at night gets noisy, and if there's any liquor around, it's gonna be worse. So that's my thought, I'm against it, and I thank you.
Okay, and Kate, were you able to get all of that information? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
If you want to speak in favor, or if you would rather wait, you're allowed to do that, I just want to be sure that we're recognizing both sides. We usually do it alternately, pro and con, so.
My name is Anne Lusk, I live at eighteen Hart Street in Brookline, near this store. I have said this before, I have a PhD in architecture, a master's in historic preservation, I'm in an eighteen twenty workman's cottage, I've worked very hard to restore it, I've also worked very hard in the neighborhood to make it as nice as possible. We have now had fifteen dead utility lines taken down on Hart Street, we've worked to take chain link fences down, I worked very hard on the design of Clark Park, that does not have chain link fence, because we had too much chain link fence in that neighborhood. I'm in favor of this because he did make a case that with the age of cigarette smoking going up, he's worried about maintaining his profit, and I can understand that. He also did mention, but I'm not sure about the logic on this, that with the casinos, that maybe he would lose some of his lottery ticket sales. The reason I'm in favor is I want this store to remain in business and to remain profitable, and if it would remain in business and be profitable, it is a better neighborhood, because then more people walk to the store at, till nine o'clock at night, there's no other store in our neighborhood that's open that late, there's no other store open, especially on a Saturday night, and there's no other store that is open all day on Sunday. So we generate a tremendous amount of neighborhood wafting, walking traffic, and kids going to the store, I go there for ice cream and milk, I'm an odd proponent of selling liquor and wine, I'm old and I've still never been drunk, I've never had a hangover, so it's odd that I'm here saying this is great. I did have concerns, because when I walk to work, I go on Huntington Ave, and I pass a lot of liquor stores, and they have huge cardboard signs donated by the beer companies advertising special deals, it blocks the entire window. They also have been given fluorescent signs from the beer companies, so I didn't want this to turn into, well, check cashing in this store, come here and get your cheap beer, come here and get your lottery ticket. So I did go online and look at storefront designs, and I have this one document to give to you, which I'll quickly walk up to the front, and I was also ready, I'm a lawyer, that's available online. Because I didn't want the store to make that corner, which has some negative components to it, because the sign says, "Walk now when you hear this light," and it's an offensive sound to hear, and there's a lot of traffic and traffic noise, I wanted the store to be attractive. It currently is painted cream, and it has a dark green additional element to it, there is a dark green canopy over the front door, and it, looking at that website, and also at tons of images on Google Images for beer storefronts, typically you know it's a beer and a wine store, because you see the beer and the wine in the front of the store. In this case, the beer and wine are going to have to be way in the back, so you won't see it, so the idea had been for him to put an additional green canopy that says Beer, Wine, and Sundry's, so you have another dimension coming out into the sidewalk, to again, give that section of town some more uniqueness, and to be able to maintain his profitability. I think we could be watchful to make sure that people are not going there and just hanging out and drinking, and I think it could be an amenity, and I really would like to s- keep this business profitable, because I think it's a huge asset for the community.
Okay. Uh, just to respond, you've given us something from New York City, which is nice, but Brookline has its own, a very robust sign-by-law, sign and facade review is handled by our planning board, uh, they meet every other week at eight AM, and I think it's very nice for you to offer this, but we've got our own guidelines, and you can find them online, too.
Well, I will, I'll go back and look for that, I was happy with the paint color and the li- the, uh, graphics that they had chosen for this store, and they already picked a green canopy over the door, and it would just be adding to the green canopy.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Uh, I'm Phyllis O'Leary.
Pull, can you pull the mic down?
I'm Phyllis O'Leary, town meeting member from Precinct Five. And there are other town meeting members that could not be here tonight, but that are against this as well as myself, and neighbors that live in the area. And the fellow that got up to speak before me, um, had mentioned the cans in his yard. Well, there are many times when I have walked by that store and found scratch tickets all over the sidewalks, used. I mean, I don't, I don't buy them, but they're all over the, the, uh, front of the store, and there's cans, as he well said, and my other real concern is the fact that we live in a, we have a very small commercial area, in that immediate area, and from Route Nine to High Street, we have the new restaurant that's gone in, and a cleaners, and then we go to the next block, and we have Kirkman's and Foley's, both sell liquor, and then we go to the next block, and there's another liquor store, and it just seems to me that within a small radius, we, we will end up having three areas where liquor is being sold, and basically, I just think it's too many liquor stores too close together in that area, and that is my personal feeling, but also the feelings of other town meeting members and other residents of the immediate area. Um, the person that owns the property next to the market, I don't know if you received an email from him, he said he was gonna email you, um, you know, his response to this store becoming a liquor store, and he was very much against it. He owns a single-family house, which is right next door, and he himself has reiterated what I've just said about the trash and the noise, the congregation, there are many times when people are congregating outside of his front gate, as well as the store, and basically that's really, um, what the issue is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Haas, I live at two oh one High Street, but my property also backs up under Cypress, so I'm literally right there in the, the firing zone. Um, the thing with the two liquor stores right down the street, literally two hundred yards away, I'm not sure why we need a third into the neighborhood. Um, I'm terribly disappointed that I was not notified about the meeting with the, the owner and the lawyers before, I was told that there was gonna be one, then it was canceled, and now I'm told that there was one, um, I don't know what happened with the communication, but, you know, I was, um, I was hoping to maybe air, air some grievances with the, with the owner of the establishment, but was unable to do that. Um, along with, uh, the litter, yes, it's a never-ending job to pick up in that neighborhood and to kind of keep up with all the scratch tickets and the potato chips and the Coke bottles all over the place. Um, one thing that hasn't been mentioned, which is, I'm directly affected by, is parking. People just come and they leave their car anywhere they want, I'm in there for two or three minutes, I, I, I wish I could tell you the number of times I've had to walk across the street, 'cause I can't get in and out of my driveway, or my tenants can't get in and out of my driveway, because someone's in the store, "Oh, I'll just be a minute, I'm in here buying my scratch ticket," or "I'm in here buying something." You gotta go, go over there and chase them out to, to, to move their car from blocking your driveway, so the parking is certainly a concern for me as well, which, by the way, I pay for, um, in a special permit to be able to park there during the daytime, which was, um, set up with traffic. Uh, so the parking and the litter, um, the thing about them being able to kind of police this thing, and there have been no citations for underage selling of, of lottery tickets and cigarettes, well, I beg to differ with that as well. I can't tell you the number of times that you go over to the park in Robertson Park, there's a bunch of teenage kids from the high school, cigarettes, scratch tickets going a mile a minute, the stuff ends up all over the park, nobody picks it up, nobody's responsible. I would somehow like this man to be slightly more, um, in sync with the neighbors, with the abutters that are kind of, um, left to kind of fend for themselves with the, the trash and the annoyance that they kind of continually leave i- in the neighborhood. It's, it's nothing but a nuisance, nothing but a nuisance that a liquor license is certainly not gonna solve and just add to the problems, as far as I'm concerned.
I would, I would just add, in fairness to the applicant, I, I think the statement was that there hadn't been any citation for, uh, violation of tobacco, and, you know-
Just because they haven't-
No, 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 I, I-
Doesn't mean that there hasn't been violations.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I, you know, um, as, as I sit here, I don't know, I, I assume that there are kids that are smoking, I don't know where those kids got the cigarettes, um, and, and I'm, and I'm not sure that you can pin it on this establishment.
I've seen a block of a store over to the bench, in Robertson Park, at the entrance of Robertson Park, on Cypress Street, with the cigarettes, with the scratch tickets, the next half an hour later, after they're gone, is there-
Okay.
Next person?
Hi, good evening, uh, my name's Anthony Nero, I, um, live on, um, High Street Place, uh, which is, um, my front yard is Robertson Park. Um, I wrote a letter to my elected representative, and I just thought it would be prudent to read it, and just, I have a few comments that-
The board has your letter.
Oh, you have it, so I don't have-
We have, we have, and it's quite long.
We have the letter.
Oh, okay, good, good, okay.
We don't have to read it.
Fair enough, if I just may then respond to, respectfully to, a few of council's statements, um, one, um, he was ac- asked what the exact proposal was, and there was no exact proposal that was submitted that I heard, but, um, it would, it was stated that, well, there, there's rows of coolers in the back, um, and shelving unit, and that's where there would be the beer and wine, um, but, hey, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not bound by any marketing plan that they proposed today, if they choose down the road that that's not working for them, and they choose to move their product in the front, they can do so, um, and I don't question the good faith of council in stating what their proposed market plan is, um, but market plans will change, it's the permit that they're asking for, and the permit is what gives them the discretion, um, and so that will change, um, inevitably, um, because again, the purpose is to move as much product as possible, and I think we all know from general marketing and, um, obtaining our bachelor's degrees, um, wherever we went in our one-on-one class, that marketing, um, you want the customer to buy what's up front, um, and so I, I do think that will change. Um, again, signage, it, it gives me pause, well, they don't anticipate there being signage, um, but what's to say that there won't be down the road? When we're dealing in hypotheticals and we're asking for exact proposals, and we have legitimate concerns in the community, I think we need, uh, those hard and fast answers, um, and unless they're willing- And unless they're willing to agree to a more, a permanent moratorium on, on such signage and marketing with inside the store, then any good faith representation is really, it's not worth very much, I think, when we're acting for exact, when we're asking for exacts. The fact that they mentioned that they would install additional cameras in the back, that gave me pause when I heard council speak to that, because what that tells me is that they recognize that there is going to be an enhanced security risk, that they're bringing this product into their market will create a potential for additional crime. And I think that with the prior proposal, with the keeping the store open until 3:00 a.m. to sell food, you know, are we looking to attract problems? And I think they recognize that there is a potential that problems will be attracted, whether it's a store saying, "We'll hire a police detail," or a, a store saying, "We'll install security cameras." Look, I'm a defense attorney, there are security cameras, I see them all the time. Security cameras don't prevent crime. They help prosecute crime, but they don't prevent crime because you don't, these are one-circuit cameras, you're not watching them live. You might notice that a product is missing. When I worked at a liquor store, we would have case counts, and we sold hard liquor. We know how many bottles of X, Y, and Z are in the store, and we do inventory. And if there was something missing, we would go back and look at the cameras, but that doesn't prevent the crime. It helps prosecute it. And so I think what the store owner and council has recognized is that there will be a potential for increased crime and shoplifting with the presence of alcohol. As far as the product mix goes, again, the permit does not restrict what they can and cannot sell. If it's beer or wine, they can sell beer or wine. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be ignorant, but they're not prohibited, once they get this, from selling singles. They're not prohibited from selling small bottles, Copa, for example, is a, I'm sorry.
It, it can only be beer and wine. I mean, I don't know what size containers you can buy beer and wine, but.
Yes.
It cannot be Nips, which the, are usually hard alcohol.
Right. And, and I'm clear on that point. And again, my main concern, and I think I iterated in my letter, is single-serving drinks. Beers can be served in 12-ounce cans, they're sold in 40-ounce bottles, and the most lethal stuff that, again, I see in my line of work are the 22-ounce cans of beer. It's labeled as malt liquor, but it falls under beer licenses. Steal reserve, for example, 8.1%. You drink two of those, and it's almost like drinking a six-pack. People don't crack open a 22-ounce beer to cool off after mowing the lawn, they do it to become intoxicated and intoxicated quickly. And again, there's nothing prohibiting them from selling those, even though they might say, "Well, right now, we intend to sell only bottles of wine and cases of beer." That was the, the quote from council. So they're not going to sell six-packs? They're not going to sell 12-packs? I, I find that very hard to believe. And again, I'm not saying that it's not a statement made in good faith, but it's just not realistic. Once they get this license, they can sell what they want, as long as it's beer and wine. And that is opening up the door to those single servings. Wine as well is something that can be served in very small bottles. You'll find in the grocery store, Sutter Home, they have four packs, very small bottles, very easy to steal, very high in alcohol. And it's also something that can be easily concealed and consumed in the park, which, again, I think I was clear in my letter, is one of my major concerns, especially with And again, the owner, I believe his name is Gil, he had said to the board tonight, to the council tonight, you know, "It's going to be based on customer demand." Customer demand. So that begs the question, what will the customer demand be? Well, will they be able to compete with Foley's, which has a, one of the biggest arrays of craft beers that I've seen? Will they be able to compete with Foley's wine selection? Will they be able to compete with Kirkman's beer selection and wine selection? And if they can't, then they're going to have to revert to lower-shelf, single-serve items that people want to grab on the go before they go to a party, before they go hang out in the park. And, you know, again, when you're selling single-serving items, you do open up a risk of public safety as well, because they're consumed in cars while driving. And again, I'm speaking from experience as a defense attorney. It's, it's no secret that this is what happens. I understand that there's a concern about profits, the concern that there's going to be a profit loss with lottery tickets because of casinos. I think it's so tangential, I, I don't know how to really to address that. Cigarettes as well, that the age of smoking is going up. I, I think it's a good thing. The markup on cigarettes and lottery tickets is nil. It's nil. You don't make your money off of cigarettes, you don't make your money off of lottery tickets. Beer, the markup is not great on beer. There are business owners here who could speak to that more than I do, but from my years of working at a liquor store, and I was involved in ordering and discussing profits with the owners, a markup on a 30-pack, for example, is about $1.50 to $2. And maybe that's changed, but I don't think that's changed. And you can ask a representative from United, there's only two or three people who sell beer in this state, the markup on beer is not a lot. So it's a volume business, where the stores make their money as on harder alcohol, that's where the greatest markup is, and then next is wine. And again, if I'm wrong, the store owners can correct me, but that's my memory from being in the business myself. That's where the greatest markup is. They're not going to be saving their business by selling this, unless it's a volume business, and a volume business will be in single-serving items.
Please conclude.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I mean, lastly, you know, I, I ask you, if, if they were asking to put a marijuana dispensary across the street from the park, would we be having the same conversation? I would hope so, because what it is, is a public safety issue. And so I appreciate the time. Who would have thought my off-the-cuff speech would be short, longer than my letter, but I, I appreciate.
Thank you very much.
We've noticed that.
Yeah, sorry.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Andy Olens, a town meeting member from Precinct Five, and I've lived there a very long time. I will be brief, and I'm sorry I missed the, the presentation at the market, I was out of town, I did get notice of it. The question I ask the board is, what is the public benefit by granting this new license? And as far as I can see, there's no new product or service that's going to be offered there. Everything that he's talking about is available two blocks down Cypress Street, nothing new. This has been a problematic location in past history. And I think there's a danger of it being problematic again if this license is granted. So in summary, I see no benefit that accrues to the neighborhood, and I see potential downside. And on that basis, I ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Azara. I live at 17 Henry Street. Unlike my neighbors, I'm new to the neighborhood, we moved in in 2007. I plan to be there a long time. I would like One Stop to be a successful business because it's the view out of my kitchen window. It is in my backyard, literally, and I want them to be successful. I am a customer at One Stop. My children, who, I have two boys, their ages nine and 11, they are customers at One Stop. They go over there for all the things their mother won't buy them, candy, chips, et cetera. And I'm strongly opposed to the wine and malt license because it's a public health issue. I did very little research and very quickly came up with a number of public health research pieces about the positive correlation between alcohol outlet density and violence in urban neighborhoods. As a healthcare professional and as a mom, I do not need another alcohol outlet in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is James Marone. I live on Henry Street. We've been there since 2004. And being the last speaker, I have the, my position is just to, to agree with all the other speakers who, who came before me. I don't, I don't want to repeat everything that they said, but for the reasons that pretty, pretty much every reason that I was going to present has already been, been mentioned. But I'll just, like, like Jennifer, I also have kids who, who frequent the market, and we go there, and I also want to see it be profitable, but not, not this way. So I'll just, I, I won't repeat what everybody else has said, but I just wanted to support what they've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board members have any questions, fact information?
Yeah, I actually have one question.
Sure.
There was an email that I saw, and I'm looking for it now, that basically indicated that this establishment had a sign in the window saying, "Parking only," you know, "customer parking only," referring to the public, yeah, here we go. "Customer parking only," referring to the public street in front. And I'm just wondering whether that is, in fact, the case.
Such a sign, does it exist in the window on the premises?
That sign was put just not too long ago, just like maybe a month or two months ago, because people leave the car there and they go cross the street for all day. You know, the crossguard lady, Jackie, told me, "Why don't you put one sign here, they might help you." So, you know, my, one of my employees put the sign up there, because we have very limited spot, like maybe three spots in front of the store, and all other spots, people leave their cars, cross the street, or their houses, their houses. Nobody find the parking there, I'm not, have any business. So I'm there almost 15 years, if I can speak. Can I?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, by all means.
Okay, so please. I'm there almost 15 years, and my age is 37. When I went, came to this business, I was still young, okay? So I want to improve this business as long, as long, as long. I can, you know, work there. I have three kids. They're not even in high school yet, they're still teenagers. I want to send them to college. All these, a year there, people saying, "The cans in my yard, lottery ticket in my yard." You know, I haven't sold any beer, wine yet. Where'd those come from? From other liquor store? Have they go to those stores and tell them, "Your beer, beer cans coming to my yard?" No. Why are they telling me my beer's gonna go to their yards? Not they're only selling the beers. 15 years, I'm getting a letter from the police, "We went to your store, thank you, you corporate, no sell to minors." Because if I sell to.
Excuse me, you're, you're speaking about tobacco sales.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, all the people mention it. I'm going back, those people mention against me, you know? So all these people here, I'm, thank you, all these people came here, but I only know one person who comes to my store, one person out of all these people. If these 15 people here, I can bring 200 people with me in my favor, but no. This one person comes to my store every day, buy $1 scratch ticket, that's the one person, is it? None of the other person, never come. I'm just. I, I have 200 people sign that they want it, who comes there every day. You know? Give me a license or don't give me a license, that's okay. I'm there 15 years, I never think I need a license, because business was so good, now it's going down and down, down every day, because all these economies issue, this issue, this issue. I thought I should give a chance. Maybe keep me in the business for long, if I can have customer demand, whatever, they goes there, and they're looking for it. I'm, if I want a license, I, I'm there 15 years, I could apply years, years ago, but I'd never think I need a license. But now I think, business going down every day, if they skip, continue to going there, you know, breakfast place down the street from, close after 30 years, it's gonna happen to me, same thing. My three kids probably look at the house, cross the street from my store and the project, that's where I'm gonna be end up, you know? Because three child, only one father's working, how, how can you afford it? I'm living on that one. If, end up one day, I'll be out of business. Casinos opening over there, cigarette went to $10, $12. People don't buy much. What else people looking for? Groceries, beers. So I say, "Okay, let me, you know, apply for it, and maybe I can succeed myself." But give me or no give me, that's up to you guys. I appreciate whatever decision you take. Thank you.
Comments from members of the board?
Well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I must say that I'm not convinced that, looking at the requirements of the statute, it's really a public need, common good, or the public good being advanced. And I don't think that, that showing has been made here. There are, I think, an adequate or more than adequate number of places already selling wine and beer in this location, and really, you've got Kirkman's at 227 Cypress, you have Foley's at 228 Cypress, this is at 321 Cypress. The, the public need, I think, is, is simply not here. The, in addition, I think there have also been expressed and essentially acknowledged, there are parking and traffic issues already in this location, and I think they would just be exacerbated by this. And then, in my mind, it's secondary, but you do have the public park across the street, directly across the street, where there's youth baseball and soccer, and, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced that you can draw a, the conclusion that there will be problems with respect to that, but given the lack of any public need for this additional liquor license in this immediate area, given the existing licenses and the other issues, I would vote to deny.
Slakman Daly.
Yeah, my reasoning is kind of the opposite, but I come out to the same conclusion. We have, we have granted a number of liquor licenses, for instance, in Coolidge Corner, and, and competition with other people hasn't deterred us from doing that. I, I am much more concerned about the fact that there is a park across the street, that this is a store frequented by the kids in the neighborhood. Also, I'm concerned about the, you know, the, the stories we've heard of no attempt to clean up in front of the store, the, and that, the scratch tickets on the ground and that sort of thing. So I, I feel that there's a potential here for harm, and so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against, but I, I want to urge Mr. Gill, please notify our police department to, if people are parking all day in front of your store, because they will enforce the two-hour rule, and those people will get tickets, and that will help to, to drive some turnover, you know?
Slakma Wyszynski.
In full disclosure, I'm a, an abutter to this store living on Henry Street, and I see a lot of my neighbors here. I've received, in addition to people who are in the audience here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 emails in opposition. I've lived in the neighborhood for 30 years now, and I've seen the neighborhood really change in those 30 years, and it's changed for the better, but it's a fragile neighborhood. And I, I see, I, I see this proposal as kind of going backwards for the neighborhood. It's kind of going back to perhaps what, what the neighborhood was, and I don't think it brings the neighborhood forward. I think we all want this store to be successful, but I would implore Mr. Gill to seek another outlet, seek another way to, to, to draw customers. There are other ways. Just, this isn't the way that I would hope that this store draws customers. So I'm going to be voting against it, because I don't see the public need for this.
Okay, and I am. Okay, and I am, given that you've heard the comments from members of the board, I'm just gonna make it clear that as the licensing authority, we have certain responsibilities to the public. And the standard that we must use in order to determine whether to approve or disapprove a license is whether or not the applicant fails to establish to the licensing authority's satisfaction, the compliance with reasonable requirements, which may from time to time be made with respect to licenses, or, and this is a list of different things, the conduct of the business. The said authorities may refuse to issue the applicant such a license. In undertaking this assessment, the licensing authority must determine whether or not there is a public need. And if the licensing authority does not determine that there's a public need, the licensing authority is under no obligation to grant a license. And therefore, I think what you are hearing from this Board of Selectmen is that it has not been demonstrated that there is a public need for the following reasons. There are two licensed package stores within two or three blocks at 227 Cypress Street and 228 Cypress Street. This physical location, the premises are across the street from Robinson Playground, a public playground where children and teenagers congregate. It is also within two blocks of the Kraft Family Athletic Facility, where high school students from Brookline High School walk every day after school for after-school athletics, and where there are regular young people and teenagers engaged in intramural and competitive athletic activities. All of those are not indicators that this is a favorable location for an additional liquor license. Does anybody want to frame a vote?
Yeah, I would, I would vote to deny, I would move that we deny the application of IP GG Doing Businesses One-Stop Market for a license to sell wine and malt beverages as a packaged goods store at 321 Cypress Street.
On account of not meeting a credible public need?
And for the reasons expressed by the selectmen who have spoken, including the failing to demonstrate that the public need would be advanced, or that the public need requires such a license as provided in the statute.
Kate, are you okay with that? Therefore, I move the motion, or, Selectman Binka will make that motion. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. We're gonna move to the next item on the agenda, which is a joint convention with the library trustees. Oh, and we have to rearrange the furniture. I guess we can all help.
I'd move around and grab a chair.
Usually they kind of crowded up here in the past. You know, in the past, we've always had them sort of come up here, bring our chair up here. Okay. That's fine.
How's this gonna look on TV?
I know. I said before, we've always had them kind of come up here. So, we're all facing outward. You know, I feel bad that, I feel bad that you guys are out there, because I think in the past, we've always had you crowd up here, so the camera can see all of us.
So, your back is to the world?
Is it okay?
Last time we were like this.
Okay.
I think we use those seats behind.
You're probably gonna go over the microphone.
Two times ago, we were back there. Last time, we were in forever.
Oh, okay.
Now, we're splitting the difference.
And then, previously, we were in the old Lincoln School.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I remember.
After you've been on the board for a long time, the memories all-
So, you can come and sit here, because we have a portable mic, and I think everybody can, we can be a little bit more intimate, if you want.
You need to project on the TV.
We've got a mic over here.
Yeah, why don't we?
All right.
You'll have to give her yours then.
Yeah, we don't have a portable mic.
Oh, we don't, okay. Well, then, we'll share.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Welcome to all the library trustees. Yeah, well, all right. In that case, the applicant is gonna have to stand at the podium. Sorry about that. Oh, we've given her a mic. Sorry about that. All right. In accordance with the provision of Section 11, Chapter 41 of the General Laws, there will be a joint convention of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining library trustees to fill the vacancy occasioned by the resignation of Kristin Eukerman. Therefore, we are going to convene the joint convention, and it will be to fill a vacancy on the Board of Library Trustees until the next annual election under Chapter 41, Section 11, which requires that the remaining members of the library, Board of Library Trustees, and the members of the Board of Selectmen meet in joint convention to fill the vacancy that has been occasioned by the resignation of Kristin Eukerman. All right, anyway. And I apologize for not having said welcome to everybody first. I was just trying to go through the protocol. We have several actions that we have to take. The first is, we will elect a clerk, and we have a little protocol to go through. The second is that we will elect a chairperson, and everybody will have to take a vote on that. And then, we will have the opportunity to interview all of the candidates, of which I gather, we have one. So, I'm gonna just follow my script, and we'll go through this. The first order of business is to elect a clerk for the convention, and I will accept nominees for the position of clerk.
I would like to nominate Mr. Kleckner.
All right. We have a motion to nominate the town administrator, Mr. Kleckner. Is there a motion that nominations be closed?
So moved.
Then, it is so moved. All in favor of closing the nominations for clerk, please raise your hand. Anybody opposed? All right, I think we passed that. All those in favor of Mel Kleckner to be clerk, please raise your hand. I believe that also has passed unanimously.
Yeah, we had an abstention.
Oh, did we have an abstention? Did you see an abstention?
Possibly a no. There was one person, one person did not agree.
Okay.
It might have been a no.
All right. Do we have to take that vote again?
No.
Is it question, are you gonna question the vote?
We're fine.
All right. The next item is to elect a chair of the joint convention, and I will now accept nominations for the position of chair. Anybody wish to make a nomination?
Yeah, I would like to nominate you, Chairman DeWitt.
Oh, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion that nominations be closed? All in favor of closing nominations for chair, please raise your hand. I believe that was a unanimous, nope, sorry, an abstention again.
You don't know if it's an abstention or not.
All right. Is there anybody opposed? I guess there was no vote in, there was no negative vote. All right. All those in favor of Betsy DeWitt as chair, please raise your hand. All right, we have one, one hand's not up.
And you apparently also abstained or no?
I was not voting for myself. Therefore, I believe the election of chair has been approved, and therefore, I will serve as chair for this joint convention. Okay. We can take as many as seven rounds of votes, should it be required. I do not believe we will be required to do that. We have one candidate for the position, Maglin Moran, and I understand that Ms. Moran has already answered a series of questions posed by the Board of Library Trustees, which we have before us, and therefore, as we go forward, I'm going to ask Ms. Moran to give us sort of an overview of her background and interest in becoming a member of the library trustees, and then, there may be other questions in addition to the ones that the library trustees have already posed. So, you have the floor, Ms. Moran.
Thank you. I'm Maglin Moran. My position, I, my job in real life is, I serve as Vice President for Biology at Hydrobiosciences. I have a PhD in neurobiology from Harvard University, and I work in a small company. I've been working with the library since June of 2012. I've been a member of the Trustees Programming Committee. As part of those, as part of that, I've worked on the first 20s and 30s event, trying to bring the library to a larger demographic. This was an Oscars party that we had in February of 2012, 2013. Since then, I'm currently serving as chairman for Defending Jacob for Brookline Reads 2014. We had the first event for that last night. This is a community-wide reading event aimed at promoting books, a love of literacy, as well as fostering a sense of community around Brookline, and I've been serving as chair of that since October. Additionally, on the Programming Committee, we decided we wanted to have an event around Monuments Men, the George Clooney movie, and, because we thought it would be the type of event that might appeal to a demographic in Brookline, and so, I wrote to Sony Pictures and talked to people there, and was able to get 50 sets of tickets for the staff and for library patrons. So, I've been an active member of the Programming Committee. I've run for library trustee previously, and that's why I'm here this evening.
Okay. Are members of the board aware of the questions that were already posed by the Board of Library Trustees? And therefore, I'm going to assume that although you may have additional questions, are there additional questions the board members would like to ask?
No, I would just note that I, we have essentially a two-page question and answer, plus your CD, and, you know, I've certainly read the questions, read the answers.
Okay. And do members of the selectmen wish to add, ask additional questions?
I have no further questions.
Okay.
And I read, I did read through the materials, and I think the applicant is qualified. I do have a question about the process, though.
Sure.
How was the, how was this advertised, that there were, that we were seeking an appointment?
Actually, maybe we'll ask the chair of the trustees to tell us about that. Would you mind, and Ms. Livingston, you're gonna have to come over, and either, you can go stand at the podium where there's a live mic, or, yeah, that's probably best.
I'm Karen Livingston, the chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, and this year, we used social media for the first time in addition to everything else we did. And so, our emerging technology, technologies expert in the library, put it out in social media. We had it on the cover of our homepage, and then developed a link with the questions that we asked candidates to answer. And we also were lucky enough to, we put it in the tab, we sent it to the online local media, and we were lucky enough, in the tab, if anyone saw it, five things you should do this week on page two of the tab. Number one, brush off your resume and apply to be a library trustee. That was number one. Number two was, go to Defending Jacob, Brookline Reads. So, of the top five things you should do that week, we got good coverage for the library. So, I don't think it could be more broadly announced in our community than we did, than, it wasn't possible to do more.
Thank you, Karen. But there was only one, just to clarify, there was only one applicant, despite that good fortune and good efforts.
Right. You know, I think there's, I was, we've all discussed this, why that would be. I think there are so many other things going on in town now that have taken people's attention. It's the only thing I can, that I can think, that-
We're also talking about an appointment only until May.
For two months. Just two months, right.
Yeah. And then, you have to run again.
Exactly, exactly.
Other questions? Selectman Daley?
No, I just want to say that since there is only one applicant, we are very fortunate that you are so well-qualified, and it sounds like you've already been doing a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the library. So, I'm delighted that you're interested, and I assume that you will intend to run again in May?
Yes.
While, while the chair is looking at that, was-
We're trying to figure out exactly how to do the roll call vote, so ignore me for a moment.
Is the Riverdale School the one in the Bronx?
It is.
Are you a Yankee fan?
I am.
Oh, no.
It is true.
I can't lie.
You never asked.
I can't lie.
Wow, Dick, I think that, you know, you've gone into intimate details of her life that I think you should best left unexplored.
Well, you are honest.
You have to come to a microphone.
If it works. We determined that maybe the battery's dead. So, please go to the podium, sorry.
Michael Berstein, Library Trustee, I will point out that I am a Mets fan, so.
Well, that is actually far more acceptable.
Diversity.
Yes, diversity. John F. Kennedy went to Riverdale Country School.
Ah-ha.
In addition to a number of other schools.
Yes, right, including one in Brookline.
Yes, including one in Brookline. He went to Riverdale Country School.
Okay. I'll open the floor to library trustees. Are there any ones who wish to make a comment or ask a question with regard to this candidate? Nope. Okay.
I'll make a comment.
Please do. But you have to go to the mic. Sorry about that.
I do feel very fortunate that we have people in the community that are willing to stick with it the way Maglin has, and she has done such an amazing job. You just heard a few of the things, as a volunteer for the library. So, I think we're all very grateful that she's willing to go through this process, and, you know, hopefully, she said run again in a couple of months, and the library's very lucky that she's here.
Here, here.
Great. Well, I have to say, reading the materials, I am certainly delighted that you have such a well-qualified candidate, and particularly somebody who's been working closely with the library and knows, I hope, all of the responsibilities that will fall to her, should she be elected. So, if there are no additional comments from members of either the trustees or the Board of Selectmen, we can move to the official vote. of Selectmen, we can move to the official vote, which is done by a roll call, and I will read now from my script, pardon me. The law requires that we fill the vacancy by a roll call vote. Each member has one vote. I will call the list alphabetically, and I'm probably going to screw it up, because the list I'm working from is not alphabetical, so you're going to have to bear with me. And at the time, please state the name of the person for whom you are voting, okay? That's the rules. We go by name, and then you state the name of the person for whom you're voting. And what I was trying to do was figure out how to do this with everybody alphabetically. What I can start with is Ms. Axelrod, an A.
Yes.
Nope. Please give us the name of the person.
Oh, okay. Can I go A?
Okay. That was A. Then I'm going to say, Benka?
Magdalene Moran.
Burstein?
Magdalene Moran.
Daley?
Magdalene Moran.
Um.
DeWitt.
Oh, me, DeWitt, Magdalene Moran. Thank you. Looking for my G's here, and trying to figure out who goes first. I think Goldman.
Magdalene Moran.
Gulstein?
Magdalene Moran.
Oh, but you know what? I have, no, I haven't. That's okay.
So what happens if you take it?
Healy.
Magdalene Moran.
All right. Loey.
Magdalene Moran.
Whoops, I got it out of order. Livingston.
Magdalene Moran.
And I think.
Margolis.
Yes, sorry. You're voting present. Okay. He's still got his hand down. Then Vanderkay.
Magdalene Moran.
And finally, Wyszynski.
Magdalene Moran.
Now, did I get everybody? Did I name everybody?
Yes.
And we have one abstention. Well, one voting present. All right. Now I have to request the clerk who has recorded the vote to report the result of the vote.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the vote is, 12 votes for Magdalene Moran, and one vote present, so Magdalene Moran is selected to fill the vacancy.
All right. Therefore, Magdalene Moran is declared to be the new member of the library, Board of Library Trustees, and to perform the duties of the position until such time as the position is filled at the next town election. The business of the joint convention being completed, I will now entertain a motion to dissolve the convention. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ah, we now have a unanimous vote. Convention is dissolved. Thank you very much, and welcome to the Board of Library Trustees.
So now we know what hit.
Yes, I need my papers. Congratulations.
Crazy business.
Where did these chairs come in?
Just leave them, please.
Leave them, just leave them.
That's fine, just leave them. Michael, just leave them.
Good to see it. And I will see you all March 3rd for the next Brookline Read.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
So Magdalene, my brother-in-law also went.
They must turn out great people.
I can't believe you just said that on TV. Wow.
All right. All right, moving along, let's try to wrap this thing up, huh? We have the notice of election, and we're filling a variety of vacancies. I have to say, I don't remember so many town meeting member vacancies in one election, but maybe that's my short memory. Therefore, I move that we direct the town clerk to place on the ballot for the May 6th, 2014 annual election, the following offices. Three town meeting members for one-year terms in Precinct 11. Two town meeting members for one-year terms in Precinct 8. One town meeting member for a one-year term in each precinct, 1, 5, 10, and 15. And finally, one town meeting member for a two-year term in Precincts 1 and Precinct 14. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Gulstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, we have some appointments. So I'm going to ask Mr. Kleckner to walk us through our appointment roster.
Yes, Madam Chairman, and members of the board, there is first committee up for considerations, EDAB, the Economic Development Advisory Board. There are five expiring slots. I will read off, beginning with the incumbents, the candidates, and will conclude when there are five slots filled. Thomas Nally.
Aye.
Kenneth Lewis.
Aye.
Donald Warner.
Aye.
Marilyn Newman.
Aye.
Robert Spurber.
Aye.
Well, that fills the five vacancies.
Okay, and these will be terms through 2016?
All expiring in 2016.
Okay.
That's a board, I wish we had more slots.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Now comes to the Park and Recreation Commission. Same here, we have two vacancies and three candidates for either reappointment or candidate.
And I have to go on record as abstaining, because I missed the interviews.
Okay. So I will list them, beginning with John Bain.
Aye.
Aye.
And Jean Stamaris.
Aye. Stuart Silvestri.
Aye.
I believe that Mr. Bain and Ms. Stamaris.
Yeah, and I also missed the interview, so I did abstain.
Okay, so you had three members.
Three, three.
Oh, wait a minute, it's two to one.
Two and one, I'll do it again.
Okay.
Do you want to revote?
Yeah.
Okay, we've been asked to take the vote a second time, bearing in mind that Selectmen DeWitt and Benka are abstaining, because we were not able to.
Let me try this again.
Sorry about that.
John Bain.
Aye.
Jean Stamaris.
Aye.
Stuart Silvestri. So Mr. Bain and Ms. Stamaris are reappointed to the commission. And now comes the Planning Board. There is one vacancy, or one expiring term, and one incumbent interested in reappointment, Linda Hamlin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, February 25th.